Order again?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to call the order, the regular Board of Education meeting for May 24th, 2021. I'll start by reciting our vision statement. Every school will be a thriving school that prepares every student to graduate from high school, college, career, and community ready. Nikki, I'm going to ask that you read the resolution and then I will lead us to the motion after.
Absolutely, and I am honored to read this motion today. This is the resolution in support of transgender, non-binary, non-binary, and all lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning plus LGBTQ plus students. Whereas the Madison Metropolitan School District is committed to a learning environment that is physically, socially, and emotionally safe for all students. And whereas the Madison Metropolitan School District is committed to cultivating a climate in all our schools that is welcoming, safe, and inclusive for all students. And whereas the Madison Metropolitan School District is committed to cultivating a climate in all our schools that is welcoming, safe, and inclusive for all students. And whereas the Board of Education and District are committed to honoring, valuing, and affirming our transgender, non-binary, and all LGBTQ plus students, staff, and families through our policies, practices, and curriculum. And whereas Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 prohibit discrimination on the basis of sex. And whereas on June 15th, 2020, the US Supreme Court held that discrimination on the basis of an individual status as gay or transgender constitutes sex discrimination within the meaning of Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And whereas President Joe Biden issued an executive order on January 20th, 2021, affirming that discrimination against transgender individuals is discrimination on the basis of sex. And that children should be able to learn without worrying about whether they will be denied access to the restroom, the locker room, or school sports. And whereas in 1985, the Wisconsin Legislature enacted Section 118.13 of Wisconsin State statutes, which prohibits discrimination in public schools on the basis of sex, race, religion, national origin, ancestry, creed, pregnancy, marital or parental status, sexual orientation, or physical, mental, emotional, or learning disability. And whereas the Department of Public Instruction and the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association, WIAA, confirmed that denying the student the opportunity to participate on a sports team consistent with their gender identity likely prohibited sex discrimination. And whereas the WIAA supports transgender students' participation in athletics based on their gender expression and gender identity, not the sex they were assigned at birth. Therefore, be it resolved, the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education affirms, supports, and values the gender identity and gender expression of all our students. And will to continue to further efforts at our schools to create a welcoming, safe, and inclusive learning environment for transgender, non-binary, and all LGBTQ plus students. And therefore be it further resolved that the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education supports human rights and equitable educational opportunities and practices for all LGBTQ plus students. And therefore be it further resolved that the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education rejects any legislation or action that dehumanizes, marginalizes, or violates the rights of transgender, non-binary, and all LGBTQ plus students. Therefore, be it further resolved that this statement be permanently imprinted in the Board of Education minutes for the regular meeting of May 24th, 2021. Ollie Mulro, President, Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues, Vivian Castro and Board Member Nikki Vandermeulen, for bringing this resolution forward. I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution in support of LGBTQ plus students as read and as set forth in the document prepared for the regular meeting dated May 24th, 2021. Any discussion? I'm sorry. Second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries, seven oh. Barb, before we go to the next resolution, recognizing the departing student representative, Julia Aman. Is Julia joining us this year?
She is, they're trying to join. So you can go to, I don't know, like five if you want, you'll give her a little time.
All right. All right, so we are moving on to the board election of the interim secretary. I nominate MMSD comptroller Natalie Rue to fill the office of Secretary of the Board of Education effective on June 14th, 2021, through the 2021-2022 school year. If there is no other nominations, I move that the board... Other, other...
Any other nominations?
Yeah. All right, if there are no other nominations, I move that the Board of Education elect comptroller Natalie Rue to the position of Secretary of the Board of Education effective on June 14th, 2021, through the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
Thank you, Kay. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Vote passes, seven zero. Thank you, Natalie. Thank you very much.
Be admitted.
All right.
Hey, Julia, can you turn on your video, please? Thank you.
I can try. I'm having some difficulty with my internet, so it might mess it up, but I'll try.
Thank you. Cool.
All right. Vivian, do you mind reading the recognition of Julia?
No problem. Whereas Julia Aman, a senior at West High School, has served as student representative to the Board of Education during the 2020-2021 academic year. Whereas the student representative is elected from the high school student body of MMSD and serves on the Student Senate. The student representative expresses the interest of students on the school board and advisory role. Whereas the MMSD Student Senate is composed of up to eight voting representatives chosen from each high school, the student representative, and an alternate. It functions as a medium for communication among students from all Madison Metropolitan School District schools and programs, district administration, and the school board. Whereas Julia Aman has demonstrated a commitment and advocacy for student voice through her role on the board. She has amplified students' interest and advanced MMSD's core values. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education and the MMSD community recognize and appreciate the work of Julia Aman and the Student Senate. Be it further resolved, the statement be permanently imprinted in the Board of Education minutes for the meeting of May 24th, 2021.
Julia, thank you so much for sitting. Oh, I just wanted to thank Julia for her service on the board. We wish you luck in your final exams. You've done a fantastic job this year of representing young people across the district.
She wanted to say something.
Julia would like to say something?
I can, yeah, thank you for that. I really appreciate it. I've learned so much just observing and participating when I can and when I think that might be helpful. And I've learned so much from each one of you. Thank you all for board members and Barb, and thank you all for, especially if you've reached out to me individually and checked in, discussed the issues with me. I really appreciate that. I've learned so much. It's been such an honor serving alongside you guys. And I'm excited to see where the board goes in the future. I've really appreciated this year. And thank you all for your help.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Natalie Rue also is in the room, in case you wanted to say something to her.
Natalie Rue, thank you so much for stepping up to be our board secretary. Welcome to the team. Like, anybody else like to say anything to Julia, our departing student, or Natalie? I think it's good.
Julia, I just want to say thank you so much, coming in in this COVID and having a student such as yourself, who really did embody what we want in terms of a leader, student leader, here in Madison Metropolitan School District. And you really introduced me, helped me out a lot with Facebook. No, we actually had our students meeting and you had me on, I think it was chat, what'd you guys call it? Okay? But you had me, whatever it was, you had me on, you introduced and you taught our team how to do it. So I thank you so much for that. And seriously, just being a student, not only did you listen, but wow, the contributions you made with your words here at the board tables and just giving us things to think about in terms of being inclusive with other students. So thank you so much for your leadership, seriously.
Thank you very much.
Another?
Julia, thank you so much for bringing your voice to the very adult space. I know at times I speak for myself, it can be as innocuous, but I really appreciate not only you bringing your voice, you bringing your colleague voices to really thinking through the issues that we, that we're discussing. I know this year particular has not been easy for any students. And you were both experiencing those as high school students, as well as leading us into conversations and bringing your advisement to our conversation. So I'm deeply grateful to all your, everything that you brought to our meeting. Thank you so much and good luck to you.
Thank you, Amanda, that means a lot.
Commissioner?
Yeah, Julia, I also just wanted to say thank you for your time and your talents that you have given to the Board of Education over this last year. And your thoughtful approach, your preparation for meetings, your analysis of issues, and really good questions. And I'd just like to recognize there are a few times in the meetings where you really brought us back after some difficult conversations to some very important points. So thank you again for your service and best of luck to you wherever the next part of your journey may lead you. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Hi. Sorry. Yeah, thank you, Julia. I just wanted to thank you for always trying to focus us on the student voice in our conversations and your outreach to fellow students to get their input and serve as a voice for their input in the discussions we've had on the board. We've had no shortage of challenges this school year, and so I truly want to thank you for your commitment to this service also. You know, being a student and applying for college and things like that. So that's no small feat, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
I didn't know if you wanted to go first.
Oh, I already went.
Julia, I want to thank you, one, for your hard work, two, you always focused on the student voice, which was important, but you also rounded us in the bigger issues of what we were discussing, who it is and who it affected. And first time I ever saw a student representative be quoted in the newspaper as the main quote, I thought that was wonderful in one of the articles about a month or two ago. And really appreciated that because it shows that if we're going to listen to student voice and take it seriously, it should be recognized seriously as a board member. And I'm really glad that you got that opportunity. I hope future our students get that opportunity as well because you're as much a board member as the rest of us. And I really appreciate your work and I wish you the best of luck in the future.
Thank you, Nikki. You really inspired me throughout the year. Thank you.
Aw, thank you.
So Julia, I knew, but I don't know you very much or very well. However, the few meetings that I have been a part of, I feel as though, you know, you definitely embodied the fact of students realizing their power and their voice. So I think that that's important and I'm actually also looking forward to your future endeavors and I know you'll be a strong force that we reckon with in the future. So congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, and I wish I could have gotten to know you better and I'm excited to see you in the board in the future.
So being student rep is an enormous job. It's a huge commitment and I just really want to appreciate your stepping up and not only doing the job, but doing an exemplary job of it. I just very much appreciate your honesty, your insight, your intelligence, and all that you brought to this board this year. So thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. That's really nice to hear. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Julia, for your service and your time and your work with us. Moving on to public input. Written registration submissions are open from Friday at 3:00 PM. On Mondays, when there are board meetings, these statements are uploaded to the paperless Board of Education system called Board of... Okay, thank you. Summary of written statements submitted. We have two. Our trans and non-binary students deserve the vocal and unwavering support of the school, of their school district leadership. Wisconsin Legislature will be having a hearing on the anti-trans athletes bill, AB 195 and AB 196. And our trans and non-binary students need to know that they are valued and trusted within our schools. If these bills were passed, my child would be one of many MMSD students excluded from school athletics by extension, excluded from full access to school experience. We need MMSD to champion equitable access to a full school experience for LGBTQ plus students. Thank you, Katie Hayden. Oh, thank you. We have two in support of equitable access to school experiences with MMSD LGBTQ plus students, including athletics. Unopposed to the Wisconsin Legislature's anti-trans athletes bill, AB 195 and AB 196.
Thank you. We can move to 2.4.
General public, general public appearances.
Yep, our first speaker is Amira Piroti. Amira, if you could... Thank you, there you go.
Hello, sorry, my eyes have been on the bridge lately. Can you see and hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Amira Prati, my pronouns are they/them/theirs, and I'm a junior at Memorial High School. Before I get into what, I came here to say thank you for your statement of support for trans and non-binary youth, I'm non-binary, and working against the anti-trans bills. So it does mean a lot that MMSD is standing firmly behind all students. One of the more accurate stereotypes about periods is that nearly everyone who gets one has a period horror story. Mine revolves around waiting in the Jefferson Memorial Nurse's Office while sitting on a plastic bag for my mom to drop off a tampon and a new pair of pants because the only menstrual products in the entire building were panty liners that wouldn't last me a class period or a super tampon that wouldn't fit. And I'm privileged because my mom could leave work and we had period products at home. Nearly every other menstruating student at MMSD that I have met has a period horror story revolving around being shamed by peers or teachers, being told to quote, "Hold your period until end of class," walking to every bathroom in the building to find a tampon, or like me, finding no period products that work for them or any at all. Often, when students ask school administrations for more period products, they are told because a menstrual product was found on the floor or students were suspected of taking more than one menstrual product, a sign that they don't have access to necessary health items at home. Staff decided to stop providing these items for the entire building. I'm a lead organizer at the local menstrual equity organization, Bleed Shamelessly. We surveyed nearly 100 students about their experiences with periods and MMSD. The results were not promising. While 86% of students said it is important to them that period products are available in every bathroom, only 22% said they had access to period products in school. And while 83% of respondents say their school provides period products in the girls' bathroom, only 13% say there are menstrual products in the gender-neutral restroom, and only 1.3% report period products in the boys' bathroom. This is despite the fact that boys, non-binary people, people of all or no genders menstruate, and of the over 30 biological sexes, multiple get periods. MMSD students sadly are all too often forced to be misgendered to get necessary health items. And I have personally been told by multiple MMSD staff members, school administrators, and MMSD district administrators that because cisgender boys are not ready to see period products in the restroom and because it will make them uncomfortable, we cannot implement an inclusive period policy that promotes equity for all students. Students need period products to be able to go to class and learn. Too many students do not have access to menstrual products on their own. They rely on schools. MMSD's current policy on periods simply doesn't support the needs of students. We are asking that MMSD provide period products in all bathrooms and locker rooms, the women's, men's, and gender-neutral. Menstrual products should also be of high quality, restocked on a daily basis, and that for the 2021-22 school year, MMSD provides period products in all district-affiliated buildings. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Amira.
Our next speaker is Cameron Craig.
Hi, my name is Cam. I too am an organizer with Bleed Shamelessly. I'm a freshman at Memorial High School, and I use she-they pronouns. I'm speaking today as well to address the lack of period products in school bathrooms. A new study by Think's and Period this year shows that nearly a quarter of all students face period poverty and cannot get the products they need to manage their menstrual cycle. And 38% of students often or sometimes cannot do their best schoolwork due to lack of access to these products. These numbers are only growing and have grown at a more rapid pace since the pandemic started. Students rely on schools at least eight hours a day to fill their basic needs. A large number of students are eligible for free or reduced lunches. Every student and staff member relies on school restrooms to provide soap, toilet paper, and paper towels. I haven't gone in person to Memorial, but in the three years that I spent at Spring Harbor, it was almost rare to see tampons and pads in the women's restroom due to the lack of restocking. And the closest viewers in the men's restroom saw to a school-provided tampon was when one fell out of a student's backpack in the hallway. The lack of refilling of menstrual products led students to need to go across the entire school to the nurse's office to see if they were there, and the minutes it took to go there and back, as well as use the restroom, took a while. Because of this, I even saw students placing their own products in the bottoms of dispensers for other students, which, kind as it is, it shouldn't have to happen, as these products are just as essential as the aforementioned school-provided soap, toilet paper, and paper towels. Our demands are the following. We ask that the school board immediately supply products in all middle school and high school bathrooms, including men's, women's, and gender-neutral restrooms, as well as locker rooms. We request that the period products are easily accessible in restrooms and locker rooms, high-quality, and restocked on a daily basis. We also ask that for the next school year, the school board provide period products to all district-affiliated buildings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cameron Craig.
Our next speaker is Antonio Wu.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. All right. Hello, my name is Antonio. I am a high school student in MMSD, and I use hot he/him/his pronouns. I'm speaking today to address the lack of period products in school bathrooms. As a cis man who does not menstruate, I cannot nearly grasp the varied physical and emotional feelings behind menstruation, nor the challenges of navigating a society that erases the experience of menstruation and consistently inhibits menstruating people from equitably accessing resources with dignity. In terms of equity, I understand there have been specific concerns about how cisgender boys in our schools would respond to the inclusion of menstrual products in male bathrooms. I cannot understand why this takes precedence over meeting the basic needs of menstruating students, particularly non-binary and trans students. Our society's hesitation to discuss periods results in a culture of shame and stigma that manifests itself in our school district, and accommodating for the feelings of non-menstruating students rather than the physical and urgent needs of menstruating students only perpetuates this culture. By refusing trans men and non-binary students who use the men's restrooms easy and dignified access to menstrual products, we are denying them equal access to bathrooms that should be as much for them as they are for any other student. It is incredibly offensive to the educational process to cater to feelings of discomfort that stem directly from ignorance rather than value the actual emotional and physical well-being of students. Rather than allowing cis boys to remain ignorant of an important bodily process that at least half the student body experiences, many of whom they share bathrooms with, we should directly target the culture of shaming and neglect towards menstruation. As a cis man, it is essential that I respect menstruation and people who menstruate. Part of this learning process is recognizing that bathrooms are communal spaces that serve the needs of every student, not just myself. Our demands are the following. We ask that the school board immediately supply menstrual products in all middle school and high school bathrooms, including female, male, and gender-neutral restrooms, as well as all locker rooms. We request that period products are easily accessible in restrooms and locker rooms, high-quality, and restocked on a daily basis. We also ask that for the 2021-2022 school year, the school board provide period products to all district-affiliated buildings. You are hurting students who menstruate simply to avoid confronting a dangerous stigma. You are allowing cis men like myself to walk free from our schools into society, believing that we can ignore the needs of fellow human beings just because it suits us better. You are waiting for someone else to create progress when you could be a catalyst for change right now. If you, as our administration, genuinely care for the education, success, and well-being of all students, then you will move beyond your own discomfort and ignorance to make this decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Antonio.
Our next speaker is Michael Jones.
Good evening. On behalf of the 2,700 members of MTI, I'm coming to this board to propose the following actions. In regards to the ongoing contract stalemate, we humbly request that the board directs the administration to either reissue the updated contracts or employ the services of a federal mediator to resolve disputes where consensus cannot be achieved, thus avoiding future unnecessary public conflicts around employment relations issues. Over the past couple of weeks, we recognize TI's representatives, but we are unfortunately at an impasse in our interpretations of the handbook. Although the language hasn't changed in Section 18, the interpretation of it has, and done so significantly, we are now asked to sign a contract and future contracts with an uncertain trust that this leadership group and all future leaders in your positions will attempt to honor a handbook that is currently being ignored. And while I trust and have affection for the members of this school board and the superintendent, our leadership cannot betray our members' trust and faith in us by endorsing a contract offer that offers us no less than our current salaries. As much as I hope Dr. Jenkins fulfills his plans to serve until he's 110, and while I can vouch for the character and trustworthiness of every single person of... and while I can vouch for the character and trustworthiness of every single person of this board as individual human beings, we have to consider the future educators, board members and superintendents who will have their own agendas, perspectives and relationships. We cannot set up a system that builds in even more uncertainty when we are trying to do the-
But I honestly think some of these must be Title I schools.
Okay, sorry, I got interrupted.
I think that's right. I think that-
Lisa, can you mute yourself?
Yeah, just the title's confusing that it is some Title I schools in Spanish. It's all the, um, it's all the middle street.
Can we ask Lisa to mute herself? Thank you. Hope I get extra time on this. No, it's okay. I just, I hope I can get extra time. And while I can vouch for the character and trustworthiness of this board as individual human beings, we have to consider the future educators, board members and superintendents who have their own agendas, perspectives and relationships. We cannot set up a system that builds up even more uncertainty when we're trying to do the exact opposite of that. Which is why if this cannot be resolved through the board or through an agreed-upon mediator, we will do our best to address our collective concerns through the courts. My second proposal is to invite the members of this board to meet with me and the MTI Board of Directors to share space on a regular basis throughout this summer in the 2021-22 school year. As the agenda for, as I set the agenda for MTI Board meetings, I will offer time for Dr. Jenkins, his team and each of you individually to meet with us and discuss items that are of concern with you, with our organization and how we're moving as an organization and a school community. My only caveat is that I expect the same courtesy extended to MTI leaders and representatives at board meetings so we can dialogue openly in the public space and address our shared struggles head-on. Is that we do not have to use public comment time to address MTI's concerns and can have a freer back-and-forth as opposed to a one-sided speech from us. As we attempt to reconcile and heal with our community over the decades of pain, both felt and inflicted, we need to build better, more transparent systems to grow the trust between our educators, administrators, families and most importantly, the children which we all serve. It is my sincere hope that public demonstrations of protest can be replaced by public demonstrations of unity, that changes are not done unilaterally and with little to no discussion, but modeled to be collaborative and progressive, and that the explicit and implicit comments and actions of distrust that both sides have shown can be replaced with words and actions of trust and respect. We can do this together and our community demands it of all of us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Kai.
Hello, Board of Education.
Well, yeah, you can start.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Thank you for having me, Board of Education. My name is Emily Kai. I'm a memorial student and I use they-hu pronouns. And today I'm speaking to address the lack of period products in MMSD school bathrooms. A study commissioned by Thinks and Period finds out one in five teens between the ages of 13 and 19 can't afford to purchase their own menstrual products. Two-thirds of these participants experienced stress and one-fourth skipped class as a result of not having access to these products. At Jefferson, the middle school that I attended, these period products were rarely available or restocked in bathrooms. I always had to bring my own pads and tampons because I couldn't count on them being available for me. If I didn't bring my own one day, I would have to take time out of class to go to the nurse's office to ask for period products, then to the bathroom to change and finally back to class. These minutes definitely add up. And due to this needless expedition, menstruators are put an academic disadvantage to their non-menstruating peers. Menstrual products are just as necessary as toilet paper in bathrooms. And MMSD must acknowledge this and offer student menstruators the basic dignity of having access to menstrual products. Our demands are the following. We ask that the school board immediately supply menstrual products in all middle school and high school bathrooms, including female, male, gender-neutral and locker rooms. We request that period products are easily accessible, high-quality and restocked on a daily basis. We also ask that for the 2021 to 2022 school year, the school board provides period products in all district-affiliated buildings. We don't ask for much, solely that the school board recognizes and supports our most basic and biological needs. Thank you for your time.
Our final speaker is, and I'm not sure of the pronunciation, Gersley Reyes.
Hello, my name is Gersally, but thank you. My name is Gersally Reyes. I am a sophomore at Memorial. I use she/her pronouns and I'm speaking today to address the period, the lack of period products in school bathrooms. A study commissioned by Thinks, a company that makes menstrual products and period, global nonprofit organization, finding to end period poverty and stigma, finds that one in five teens between the ages 13 and 19 cannot afford to purchase menstrual products. Two-thirds of these participants experienced stress. And moreover, 61% of students had worn tampons for more than four hours. Not only is wearing a tampon for more than four hours very uncomfortable and hygienic, it can also lead to TSS, which is toxic chock syndrome, a bacterial infection that results in high fever, elevated blood pressure, vomiting and even death. Talking from personal experience at Memorial, period products are rarely available and restocked in bathrooms. If we need more period products, if we need period products, we have to ask our friends if they have some or we are expected to take time out of our class to go to the nurse's office to ask for period products, then go back to the bathroom to change and finally back to class. As my peers have said, the minutes add up and due to these needless expectations, menstruators are put in an academic disadvantage compared to the non-menstruating peers. Menstrual products are as necessary as toilet paper and running water in bathrooms. And MMSD must acknowledge this and offer menstruating students the basic dignity of having access to menstrual products. Our demands are the following. We ask that the school board immediately supplies menstrual products in all middle school and high school bathrooms, including men's, women's and gender-neutral restrooms, as well as all locker rooms. We request that high-quality period products are easily accessible in restrooms and locker rooms and restocked on a daily basis. And we also ask that the 2021 and 2022 school year, the school board provides period products to all district-affiliated buildings. We're not asking for much, we're just asking that the school board recognizes and supports our most basic and biological needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. That was our last speaker.
Yes.
All right, so we're moving to Board Presidents' announcements and reports.
Oh, sorry, three point one.
Oh, motion to approve minute. I move the Board of Education to approve the minute from regular meeting dated January 26, 2021.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries, seven zero. All right, moving to Board Presidents' announcements and reports. Throughout May, we have proudly celebrated Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month to encourage more welcoming school environment that is culturally representative of all of our MMSD families. Many of our teachers pay tribute in their classroom to the generations of Asian and Pacific Islanders who have enriched America's history and are instrumental in its future success. MMSD also recognizes May 14th as Hmong American Day to honor and remember the contributions of our Hmong community. During the Vietnam War, Hmong people lived in the hills of Laos and were recruited by the CIA as part of a covert operation called the Secret War, intended to prevent the threat of communism from spreading. The 14th marks the day the United States airlifted General Vang Pao and many other Hmong military leaders from Laos to Thailand in 1975, eventually making their way to the United States. Tens of thousands of the Hongs died and were displaced because of the Secret War. During the week, our schools honored this historical contribution of the Hongs by hosting Read Aloud featuring local community readers, history keepers, artists, storytellers and uplifting Hmong language literacy and culture. We hope you check out the playlist on MMSD's YouTube channel. Seven MMSD students were named National Merit Scholar winners. Seven MMSD high school juniors were named National Merit Scholarship winners selected based on their academic record and rigor, contributions and leadership in school and community activities, essays, recommendations and more. Students will receive $2,500 towards their college education. Congratulations to LaFala High School student Mia T. Linsenmeyer, Memorial High School student Jessica L. Jan and Sunil S. Harstah and West High Schools Ashka Ashen K. Jashi and Thomas Ethan A. Khaji and Joseph B. Harre and Jessica Lu. Please join me in celebrating their achievements with a round of applause. As you know, last May, we passed a resolution to celebrate Pride Month by flying the rainbow flag at our schools during the month of June. We are so happy to report that thanks to a grant from New Harvest Foundation, we were able to purchase flags for all MMSD buildings to support this revolution. We look forward to celebrating our LGBTQIA+ community in June to show that we stand with and support, appreciate and honor our LGBTQIA+ students, families and staff. Reports on items proceeding through instruction workgroups held on May 3rd.
All right, only three point one.
Update, latest guidelines from the Center for Disease Control, CDC.
Well, at this time, I'm very pleased to have J. Afelt join me here as we're going to talk about the update from the CDC. And Mr. Afelt's been leading us along with our medical advisors and he's going to bring the latest updates in on the final comment.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Barb, would you be willing to share the slide deck? Thank you.
Okay, there, thank you.
You bet.
What's that, Jay?
Okay, um, I don't know if it's just me or not, Barb, but I'm still seeing the agenda instead of the slides. No worries. Perfect, thank you. As Dr. Jenkins mentioned, we wanted to just provide an update to the board given the extent to which the CDC recommendations and other policy and practice shifts have been reported in media and social media and as expected, likely quite a few questions across the board and across the MMSD community. There was some communication that did go out to all staff and all families late this afternoon, but I just wanted to provide this update for you all this evening. As, as you're likely aware, on Thursday, May 13th, the CDC released their updated recommendations without much warning for vaccinated people. The primary message and takeaway from those, reading those recommendations is that fully vaccinated people no longer need to wear a mask or physically distance in any setting. And the qualifier there that the CDC released in their recommendations is that that is except where required by federal, state, local, tribal, territorial laws, local businesses and workplace guidance. So the qualifier there first of all is, these are recommendations, but also recognizing that they're deferring to other more local policy and practice. Next slide, please. I think this, this overview is perhaps a little bit helpful with sort of the criteria of recommendations and in some cases, requirements. And so the CDC is at the national level and they can either make requirements or recommendations that are then interpreted by the Wisconsin Department of Health Services. Likewise, they can make requirements or recommendations for the state of Wisconsin. Those, if they make recommendations, they're interpreted by local health agencies and here in Dane County is Public Health Madison in Dane County. And then they can either make recommendations or requirements in the form of a public order, as is the case with Public Order 16. We then take our cues from Public Health Madison in Dane County and then MMSD can put in place policy as we did in January regarding mitigation strategies. And then we can also follow up with our own protocols and practices that we work with schools to put in place as mitigation strategy. So I think what's a little bit tricky here is that in some cases, people interpreted the CDC recommendations as the new requirements or sort of required shift in practice across all of these levels. Also, many were thrown off by many local or local and national chains that were releasing their policy shifts that didn't necessarily always apply, especially in a county where a public health order is still in effect. Next slide, please. As we've seen before, when the CDC releases new recommendations, then quite often there are responses from other agencies to try to provide clarity. So later, on the same day that the CDC released their recommendations, Public Health clarified that their Order Number 16 is still in effect. They did indicate that they would announce any changes the week of May 17th. And also as a reminder, Order 16, that is still in effect, requires that face coverings are used in any enclosed building and strongly recommended outdoors when it's not possible to maintain six feet of distancing. Next slide, please. So then the very next day, on Friday, the 14th, the Wisconsin Department of Health Services released their announcement, in essence, accepting the CDC's recommendations. And they also communicated on that same day that the CDC's school guidance remains unchanged. And so despite the messaging that came out, the CDC's school guidance is still the same, which then specifically is in place because they're recognizing that we're still waiting for the numbers of those vaccinated and especially in the children, school-aged children, numbers of those vaccinations to go up. Students and staff ambassadors should continue following all masking and distancing guidelines. And so you can see that even at the state level, they were pointing back to CDC saying that they're still keeping their school guidance the same despite what was messaged on the national level. Next slide, please. So as was advertised by Public Health last, or the week prior, on Tuesday, May 18th, they held a press conference to, to reiterate that Order Number 16 is still in effect and that they would keep that in effect until it expires on June 2nd. And then after June 2nd, they indicated that they will not be releasing another order, at which point their requirements and orders will become recommendations. But they also included language in their communication that same day that they strongly encouraged schools to continue requiring distancing and masks as well, indicating that again, despite the fact that they are accepting as DHS accepted and as CDC recommended, they too are still asking schools to continue distancing and mask-wearing. Next slide, please. And so given our interpretation of the new recommendations, our current status and percent of vaccinations across the age groups in MMSD, we will be making no changes to our overall approach through the end of this school year. We're proud of the work that we've done, that we've been able to safely reopen our schools and maintain open schools and opportunities for our students and hoping to finish strong all the way through the end of this school year by maintaining our use of mitigation strategies with fidelity. Also, as a reminder, MMSD does have a board policy on file, the protective measures policy that does require mask-wearing that has been in place since Monday, January 25th. And despite the shift in the public health order, this board policy is still active and in place. And also just as a reminder, I think we're all aware that with just 12 school days left and only six days after June 2nd, we've talked many times in these settings about and throughout the pandemic about the importance of maintaining consistency and routine and we're hoping that we can do that through the end of the school year. Next slide, please. I'll open it now for questions.
And just before we get to questions, let me just reinforce a couple of things here because I've received emails, been in the community, talking to a lot of people. Jay, thank you. Jay and Nurse Sally, along with our medical advisory team, have done a stellar job of leading us through this. Our whole goal is making sure that we get everyone through healthy. Now, sure, there is, there is some conflict over what CDC put out and I hope that this overview kind of helps for us clarify some things. Then for the public, one, they said if you're fully vaccinated and they, their initial thing did not even include where the schools are and there at the state level, there was some clarification at the public health level. Order Number 16, we know Dr. Fauci has said since the beginning of this, mitigation strategies matter. So the order goes into- So the order goes into June 2nd, and we've been talking as regional superintendents in terms of what's going to be the best for us finishing out. We know that socio-emotional, mental health is big. We have seen the increase in just spirit in the district and in the community as we have been able to engage our kids back in school, all of our students. Now, not all, most of the ones, those who chose to come back. But there's a reality that we're still facing in terms of how to continue to cohort our students and make sure that we're doing the contact tracing. We know the strain on our nursing staff, I just cannot say that to you enough. With the changing of some of these guidelines, we're not only thinking about now to the end of school year, but we're already in our summer thinking. And as much as we're going to continue to follow the guidance, we're already in the fall leaning strongly towards what is appearing to be at this point. If something happens, we will have to pivot. But as regional superintendents, we're talking about opening up in the fall, looking at five days, all the mitigation strategies. We can't give up on the mitigation strategies right now. And even what you see, order number 16 still talks about the masking. When you're on the outside, it clearly says if you cannot maintain six feet in terms of the distancing, it's recommended that you have your mask. June 2nd, Public Health is going to move away from the requirement to strongly recommend it. And so we're in conversation, and we'll come back and say kind of where we are after some discussion, but it'd be great to hear you tonight, things that you are just having at the front of your mind. I won't even say concerns, okay? Everyone's taking this differently based on who they are. But a district with our demographics, I will say it again, remember, this is part of our hesitancy from our medical advisors. We have to do what's in the best interest of MMSD. And that's what we're trying to do. At the same time, taking care, first and foremost, of health and safety as we are moving, as you will see, we're leaning in strongly what's going to be good for us academically. The regional superintendent outside of the state, the state regional superintendent, we have all discussed this, staying with the mitigation strategy, getting a look at the fall, but the realization is setting in that virtual, because of various reasons, medically fragile, bullying, other things that we're still working through, will become a part of our reality, not just for secondary, but 14 through 12. So now, the questions that I'll answer, anything that you have. But order 16 is still in place right now through June 2nd. Thank you, Jay, so much. You and Nurse Sally.
Thank you.
Any questions? Ananda?
Yes, thank you. I saw the way MMSD have handled, or have handled the seriousness of the pandemic. And we have been one of the first districts to close our doors to make sure that we are keeping our students safe and our staff safe. We have been really cautioned in our reentry point. And my sentiment is that we're continuing to be cautious. I'm coming from a country where the pandemic has killed millions, having impacted millions of people. And the virus is changing, as we should be. And there's new information around the bluster in the fall. And some of the information that I'm getting from some of my public health colleagues is that the card, and I was just holding mine, the piece of paper that says that I'm vaccinated, it's going to be, it's part of a legal document, but not really a legal document. And anyone can, at this point, justify that information. Anyone can put it in the records that they are vaccinated when they're not. And then two, we have a clear sense of how we're navigating that from a place of health safeness. I would encourage us to continue to be cautious and continue to be, at the very least, with a mask, with a mask. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that comment.
Any questions? Let's go, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks, Jay, for the information. One of the, it's kind of a specific question that comes to mind. And right now, it's about the contact tracing and quarantine that's necessary if you are exposed. And that changes if you are fully vaccinated. And so I'm wondering for staff, if they are exposed, they don't have to quarantine for the 14 days. Can we do that for, will we be able to do that for high school students as we round out the end of the year? Because there are some who that should apply to as well. And can we do that if they're able to show us that they're vaccinated?
Chris, that's a great question. And we have adopted that shift in close contact guidelines. And so as the weeks go by here, we have increasing numbers of especially our older students who are reaching full vaccination. At this point, the very earliest that 16 and 17-year-olds could be considered fully vaccinated was May 10th. And so it's not that long ago that we have, you know, seen this sort of increase in numbers. Just in the last two weeks, we have had 24 positive cases across MMSD. We've had a total of 66 close contacts. And I can tell you that the close contact numbers would have been quite a bit higher had we not made that adjustment for people who are vaccinated, predominantly staff, and not all staff have been vaccinated. So in some cases, we still have staff that are still needing to quarantine after an exposure. And, but you are correct, if we do have a high school exposure in a high school student who has been vaccinated, that they do not need to quarantine despite being in close contact. So, yeah, I don't think that that had been clear, but you are correct, that anyone who has been fully vaccinated, we make that adjustment.
Okay, thank you, Jay.
You bet.
And then the other thing that is sort of high school specific that I'm getting a lot of questions about is mask wearing when an athlete is participating in the sport. We know that there's been a lot of, you know, questions about before and after and when they congregate, when they're actually participating in the sport. Now with the new guidance, do we see that as possibly shifting and depending on the risk level of how those sports are categorized?
Great question. Dr. Jenkins, did you want to weigh in there?
Yeah, you can go here first.
Okay. I, you know, I know that Jeremy has studied this quite a bit to look at research around exposures, et cetera. The CDC's guidelines continue to say, and Public Health continue to say, that they're recommending, strongly recommending masks when people are within six feet. My daughter and my son are both playing MMSD sports or have this spring, and I've seen them in competition, and they're much closer than six feet throughout a competition. And so, you know, that's where that came from. I do think that in the coming weeks, there will be a lot of conversation, especially outdoors, and especially in some of the lower contact sports, if that can be a shift. And that, you know, the outdoor masking, and especially where we believe that distancing is more likely, I think that's where the conversation will go this week and beyond.
Yeah, and just to add to that, Jay, he kind of mentioned that we're going to continue to meet about it. We need the medical advisory on Tuesday. And this is the discussion that we're having because it's not only just the six feet. How long are they near one another? And I think you and I, along with Portman Macastro, we were out, and we saw sometimes that's not the case. But we want to be extremely cautious that we don't set our children up, or our staff up in a situation where we're loosening up something. And, you know, and it's just a slip. They're not intentionally trying to be closer than six feet, but sometimes, you know, you're excited to see someone, and you may do it. So we are being very cautious and going to take the advisement of our medical advisors. But we are, we are looking at it, you know, what can happen.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Dr. Jenkins. And just want to highlight again how thankful I am that the vaccination rates are going up so high in Dane County and also that our numbers are dropping to very low levels and just what that means for the safety of the whole community. So, thank you.
Or member, Chrissy.
Thanks so much, Jay. This is a great presentation, and it's good to get updated on the numbers and the guidance. I just want to build up, Chris Gomez Schmitz's last, Chris Gomez Schmitz's last question. Some of our athletic seasons go beyond the end of the school year. Like, I know the track state meet is at the end of June. So given that the Dane County guidance is going to be changing, you know, before the middle of the month, I think that gives us extra impetus to look at, you know, the nuances of different sports, whether they're indoors or outdoors, and how far apart athletes are, and think about masks while athletes are competing. As well as, you know, I think I heard in the metro meeting that students will be allowed to go to WIA competitions, which I was really glad to hear, so.
Yeah. And that's, that's a great comment and question, Chris, because as it's evolving. Remember, we weren't going to WIA first. Now we're going, but now we're also talking about other students already not wearing masks. And what does that mean for us, in particular, when a student gets vaccinated? Because that wasn't a part of discussion initially because it had not happened, but now it's happening in real time. So Jay and Nurse Sally have really been trying to, this stuff changes like really fast, and we're responding, but with the assistance of our medical advisors.
And then my second question was just about, you know, you made your comment about the need for continued virtual instruction in the fall. And I think it's good that we are looking at that. The New York Public Schools, I think, announced today that they will not be offering virtual options in the fall. And some other large school districts have said the same. I can't remember which ones. I think New Jersey and some places, and other districts on the East Coast, which I think, you know, we should do what is right for us. We, you know, we don't need to be in New York. And at the same time, I think that does speak to the challenges of virtual instruction, the way we have done it this year. You know, hybrid models, concurrent models pose to students and learning. And while we're thinking about how we offer virtual instruction in the fall, in addition to thinking about how we mitigate issues in person, we also need to think about how we offer instruction in a way that it's easier to teach and learn for everybody. And it's easier to build relationships and have those good, positive, social, emotional experiences that we want our kids to have in school.
Thank you.
So I'd like to chime in with two questions. One, we, first, I'd like to say I really appreciate all the work the administration has done to create a safe transition back into school. I think there's been a real incredible effort to create as much safety as possible for our young people. I'd also like to acknowledge that the administration did a fair amount of work to support teachers in being vaccinated. And I'm wondering if we can return to that work to help our students who want to be vaccinated access vaccination and to help families access vaccination. And I'm going to direct that question at you, Jay, and then Dr. Jenkins. I'd love to hear from you as well.
Sure. Ali, great question. You know, this spring has certainly been a roller coaster as we were looking to get our staff vaccinated as quickly as possible. The vaccine shortage was the issue, and we were doing our best to make the necessary arrangements to provide our staff as efficiently as possible access to vaccine. Now that we've moved on into our student groups, whether it was with the 16 and 17-year-olds, starting April 5th, or more recently, the 12 to 15-year-olds on May 13th. At some point in there, we sort of crossed over into a point where vaccine supply is no longer a limiting factor. And when we, when we've, our last two communications out to families, it's been a matter of helping our families connect with vaccine opportunities that are all around them. You know, the most fundamental, I think, is the Align Energy Center. But beyond that, our communications have included all of the local healthcare providers and their clinics and branches across Madison and then local pharmacies where we know, and we've heard anecdotally from a number of families, that they've made arrangements at local pharmacies. We, some have wondered why we're not offering the vaccine at our schools at this time. And I think most are aware that we do, we did do a vaccine clinic, two different vaccine clinics to help make it available to our staff. But now our schools are open, and almost all of our spaces are used. And our nurses are incredibly busy with their day-to-day work. And we're just unwilling at this point, as we wrap up the school year, to ask our nurses to be able to then, on top of that, take on trying to provide or help arrange or participate in a vaccine clinic, especially when our public health colleagues are asking, what can we do to just help get people to the empty appointments that they have in their vaccine clinics? And so, again, the communication we sent this afternoon included information for free transportation. Again, reiterating where all those vaccine opportunities are. We're also working with local health agencies. I think many might have seen that GHC last week offered a clinic at, right near the West Transfer Point, that we communicated pretty widely, hoping that that might be an easy way for people to get there. But we're also working with other healthcare providers, asking them to target other parts of town. For example, the north side, where we don't believe there's been a vaccine clinic. And instead of distributing at schools, distributing in neighborhood and community centers, that might be even more convenient and a little bit easier to access for families. And so we're with you. Just a quick update, Dane County-wide, 64% with at least one dose and 55% fully vaccinated. But we also know that there are incredible racial disparities in vaccine in communities of color. In some cases, are below half of that in terms of numbers. Our 16 to 17-year-olds, as of last Friday, 62% had one dose, 48% had completed, which is, which is pretty incredible that that quickly we've been able to get our 16 and 17-year-olds vaccinated. And then since they became eligible on the 13th, 33% of our 12 to 15-year-olds have one dose. And that number, we're hoping continues to climb quickly as we head into summer.
Thank you so much for speaking to that, Jay. I am wondering if we're messaging specifically to low-income families or families that do not have healthcare?
Yeah, the communication reiterates that it's free and available to all and that you need not be a member of a particular health agency to go and get a vaccine there. And anything that we can do as a district and as a board to help communicate that any of the opportunities we're sharing are open to anyone, independent of their status, their insurance, wherever they might receive their healthcare. Any, whatever vaccine opportunity is closest to them is one they can access.
Thank you so much for speaking to that, Jay. Dr. Jenkins, did you like to add anything?
Yeah, just one thing, so that everyone can know how you had to fill out online. That has also been removed as a barrier before you go to the Lion Center or go into a place you can just walk right up, they'll help you. I meet weekly with Dr. McGrady with our mayor, with Public Health, and also UW Health, all the healthcare systems. And we're talking about how we push this out. And these were some of the questions back at least probably about a month ago. And the effort in Public Health, UW Health, everyone working together, this has been a huge collaboration. And as Jay also mentioned, now, we don't have a vaccine shortage. So, but the piece of getting to the local community, taking it in the community has been a big thing of this group as we're trying to make sure everyone is vaccinated. I will add, there has been a shift in the data as we meet. We've met as regional superintendents, whereas we saw African-Americans and Latinx families being very hesitant. Now, there's a group of white families on a regional and national level that's being hesitant in terms of getting the vaccinations as well. So we really got to think about all when we do this. And, you know, it's just got to be really intentional. And I can't say I'm more proud of the work with the group of people, not just in our district, but in this area. That's why our numbers, I think, are going up. People are really working hard to get it done.
Your hat's on your hand.
Yes. Also, we need to consider transportation. I know people say Uber and Lyft can provide rides. I just want to remind the board, Uber and Lyft do not have to take bag dogs or make accommodations, and they don't know if in the city because they consider themselves a dependent contractor. Therefore, if there aren't rides to their or bus route to there, it is not as easy to get to some of these places as one would think because Uber does have those disability restrictions, and most people do not know that until they run into them.
Thank you for speaking to that. Thank you. Board member, Ananda Morale?
Thank you. I'll be brief. Thank you so much, Jay, for speaking to the disproportionality on who is getting vaccinated. And I want to underscore the work of our violin delivery specialists around this. And as we know, that the intersection of race and qualifiers are free with this one to very real in Madison. So my hope is that we are utilizing those cultural brokers as also key folks, as in communicating what you just communicated to us, Jay. Thank you so much.
You bet. Ananda, the communication, as always, went out, both in Spanish and in Mung. But beyond, you know, unemail communication, I think recognizing relationships and trust can play a role in helping share information is critical as well.
Any other discussion or questions from board members?
Let me ask, Nurse Sally is with us tonight? Nurse Sally?
Dr. Jenkins, she is not. She is on vacation this week, a much deserved vacation.
Okay, great, glad to hear that. Yeah, I just wanted the board to know how much she's worked. And you talk about our staff, she's put it in. So I'm glad to hear she's on vacation now, and just tell you that she's been fabulous, and she's stood strong to make sure everything was served. We deputized her in COVID-19, okay? She was like the deputy superintendent there. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the last thing, and I thank Jay for putting this on our radar, is that at some point, to transition away from our current practices, we actually have to reexamine board policy. And so that's a conversation for us to have moving forward, is, you know, our policy and the work that we've done to mitigate the pandemic and what it looks like for us to scale back in terms of our own policy standpoint. All right, item six, six one, re-reports. Reports that proceeded through the Instruction Work Group held on May 3rd, 2021. Board member Chris Karusi.
Me first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. Thank you, President Mogro. We had a very exciting meeting this month, talking about the reopening of our schools, updates, and adaptations that our staff have worked so hard in regards to 4K walls reopening. We also got a chance to see what is the re-engagement strategies that are being deployed by our teachers and our support staff in our schools. Also recognizing the amount of support of other school time partners and our after-school partners as we're moving through the reopening. We also had a chance to see the athletics update. And fortunately, I got a chance to also see the update on graduation. And yes, this year, we will have graduation following the recommendations from the CDC regarding the number of students in any particular graduation. For next, for this, for next month, we are going to continue, as always, looking at the updates regarding the reopening. We're also going to review the special education update. Along with the reopening, we'll also learn about more about what virtual learning is happening for the summer and for the fall. We're also going to be reviewing the graduation policy. We will be looking at what spur-wamping will look like in the fall as well. Thank you so much.
Item seven one, reports on the items proceeded through the Instruction Work Group held on May 10th, 2021. Board member Chris Karusi.
Thanks, Ali. So as Ali said, Operations Work Group met on May 10th. We had a budget discussion with a specific focus on our strategic equity investment and on our property tax forecast. We also took a deep dive into the federal COVID funds known as SRA1 and SRA2. And part of that deep dive included talking about the Big Ideas competition for funding that we are funding out of SRA2 funds. Our next meeting is June 14th. The agenda includes our final work session before we vote on the 2021-22 budget, as well as the facilities construction update. And I want to give everybody a reminder that budget questions and potential budget amendments are due to Kelly by this Thursday, May 27th. And if you need deadlines about submitting potential budget amendments, they are in the weekly update. Thanks.
Thank you so much for. Action items proceed through the Instruction Work Group held on May 3rd. There are no action items this month. Action items that proceeded, I'm sorry.
May I do a point of order, please? Point of order, please? I know we're doing an early budget proposal on the nurses, and I'm asking to do an early budget vote proposal with the suspension of the rules. Do an early budget proposal vote on our teachers, so that way we can just handle this contract, get it done with, and move on. So that way, our teachers and nurses can go through a summer school, and that it's handled in a manner. So I trust Dr. Jenkins, I trust the union. I just think this whole thing has gotten so overblown with everyone, and I think that the board has the power to make that decision. So I'm asking the chair's consideration to allow a vote.
Are you motioning?
I am.
I'm going to wait and see if the motion's seconded. Is there a second for the motion, Nikki? We're going to move on.
That's fine.
Second one second. There was no second?
There was no second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, she, I thought she wanted to say something, but she was just knocked out of the room, so go back here, sorry.
That is completely all right. I see Sheri pops up. Sheri, is there something you want to speak to?
I'm just trying to figure out where we're going next.
So we're still, action items that proceeded through the work group. Early budget proposal, nursing LTE. I move that the Board of Education grant early approval of a $744,000 increase to the 2021-2022 Student Support Department staffing budget to facilitate timely hiring of limited-term nursing and health support staff for contract tracing and other health services to accelerate necessary planning for summer and fall programming.
Second.
I'm sorry, that was a second from?
Second, Chris, go ahead.
Thank you. Any discussion? Chris Karusi, and then Nikki, I see you.
I'm really glad you're doing this. Contract tracing is an incredibly time-consuming task. And I very much appreciate the acknowledgement that we need to hire more people to do this, not just now, but going into the next school year. And I also am hopeful that we can stay open-minded to possibly using some of our SRA3 funds to hire even more people if we feel the need is there, because otherwise, I'm worried our nursing staff is going to burn out. So I absolutely support this, and I'm glad we're doing it.
Board member Andrew Mullen?
Yep. I respect it, I understand it, and we definitely need contract tracing. Unfortunately, I can't support it for the fact of, until the teacher contracts are done, I can't support it. I apologize, but with the early approvals, I did that with the other early approvals, and I want to stay consistent, but I respect the policy no matter what.
Further discussion? Board member Castro?
Thank you, yeah, I just want to add that with the easing of some restrictions in our area, our ability to contact trace will be very important to keeping schools open for student learning and just the mental health aspect of being able to keep our doors open for our staff and students. So also, very much in shitting the ideas that board member Karusi mentioned, in terms of using some of the federal dollars to improve our ability to contact trace. But it's very important to keep our school doors open and ultimately keeping the health of the community in mind, so.
Further discussion? All those in, all right, Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, aye? Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, six one.
Thank you.
Moving on to our consent agenda. I move that the Board of, sorry, I thought you were like bringing your hand up. I move that the Board of Education adopt and approve all of the motions that force in Section 10 of the electronic agenda prepared for the May 24th, 2021 regular school board meeting exactly as said motions are written. By voting affirmatively on this motion, a board member expresses his or her affirmative vote on each of the motions consolidated hereby, subject to any express separation that has been made by any member of the school board.
Second?
Second, Chris Karusi, thank you. Any separations or discussion? Uh, board member Marali?
10.33, please.
Separating 10.33? Board member Karusi?
10.9, 10.10, and 10.31.
Uh, yes.
10.7.
Aye. All those in favor of the motions that have not been separated? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Julia, your advisory vote, my apologies?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Uh, the motion carries, seven oh. And then we're going.
10.7?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to do it in miracle order, or?
I thought we started with 10.3.
10.33?
10.3.
10.33, I'm on the left, I'm on the left.
Oh, okay. So starting with 10.7?
Thank you.
Sure, this is, this is the funding, Summer Reading for Tattle One Elementary Schools that is culturally responsive. And just wanted to pull this out, first to highlight that it's both an elementary and a middle school strategy that this is funding. It's the Read for Better World Summer Reading packets that are going to be going home with students. Completely support and want to highlight the importance of literacy initiatives that are going to keep students reading through the summer. And I guess I have a couple of questions for administration, and then a question, a process question for my teleboard members. One of the questions is, is in addition to giving these packets of books to students and distributing them through our school, is there going to be follow-up with families throughout the summer just to sort of encourage that continued engagement with these books? Do we have a strategy for that? And then a strategy in place to evaluate if and how these books get used by students and members?
Chris, those are great questions. Gabby is here with us tonight as well. Gabby, thank you for coming. And Gabby, I'll let you speak a little bit to that.
Yes, we are so super excited to be able to bring this proposal to the board and to share a little bit of the level of intentionality connected to it, because there's only so many things that you can put in a board memo, right? So like trying to put a little bit of voice to that. The proposal of these summer packets is really our kickoff and engagement of the community, is our invitation to the party related to our early literacy and beyond strategy. So we are connecting with the schools, we are connecting with the community, we're working in partnership with the vendor. We work in partnership with the vendor to ensure that the texts really met the qualities related to anti-racist texts, like highly engaging, beautiful, beautiful texts, beautifully organized for our kiddos, to be able to then use them as the entry point for our early literacy and beyond strategy. It is just the first part of a mid-range plan to continue to engage with the community. We are working together with Dr. Jenkins and with the community at large to make a strong entry point. So this is the kickoff for that, for our strategy altogether. So I don't know, are there any specific questions that you may have?
Yeah, just, are there going to be some, is there going to be some outreach from our staff during the summer to whatever grade level these, you know, are going out to? Let's say the second graders across the district?
Yes.
Or across our 24 schools that are title schools that are getting these packets? Will they get some engagement, coming back to them saying, you know, here's something that I learned from this book, or just a way to keep the families engaged with what?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you so much. We are right now working on the finishing touches for our communication strategy and our engagement strategy with families. This will be part of that conversation. So we would be happy to come up in a future board meeting to be able to bring some of the additional details on the direct engagement with families as it connects specifically to this part of the strategy.
And Gabby, I think that the reason, right, that we were looking at this as a support for students is because it had that parent interaction component.
Absolutely.
Right, it had the family engagement component, it had some strategies for students that might have disabilities. So it'll be really interesting to see how helpful this was for families, how did students engage with it? Chris, I think that's what I hear you asking, is how will, how will we know that? And how helpful will this be? So looking forward to getting these in the hands of kids before they go home this summer, and, you know, seeing how kids interacted with them.
And Lisa, if I may just add that the books themselves are packaged for each individual grade level. So each individual grade level is getting the appropriate grade level complex text. In addition to that, it comes with at-home activities. So again, this launch is really that, right, to get a lot of excitement in the community, to make a splash with our commitment to early literacy and beyond by getting high-quality, culturally relevant texts in the hands of our elementary and middle school students along with activities that extend reading into the home.
Great, thank you for answering that question. And then just seeing the level of expenditure, it's a new expenditure, we haven't done this before. Is this coming out of SRA funds, or is this coming out of what, what is the funding source? I see the number, but.
That is the curriculum and instruction budget, Gabby, right? It's right, it's local funding, it's not SRA funding. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct, Lisa. Thanks, Cal. Thanks, Gabby, thanks, Kaylee. Appreciate you.
Of course, thank you.
Um, just a couple more questions. I wanted to reiterate Chris's comment about evaluating this, particularly if it turns out to be a good strategy, it would be nice to get some data on that, so that we know if we should make this a more long-term funding investment to ensure that we get, you know, grade-level appropriate cultural development materials in the hands of kids every summer, if it actually turns out to work. But it would be good to really get some meaningful information about the effectiveness of this before we decide to continue to invest. So my other question was, I know that we're really working to make summer semester an exceptional experience this year, and I'm wondering if for the students who receive these books and who are in summer semester, will they be used at all during the course of learning in summer semester to help tie in what's going on with the family to what's going on in the classroom?
I'm sorry, Chris, I couldn't quite hear the end. You were making the connection to summer semester?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if these texts will be utilized in summer semester just to kind of make that link between what's happening with learning in the family to what's, what's happening in the classroom over the summer?
You know, Chris, I think that's a really good idea, right? We have students in summer semester, we have an opportunity here to see how those students and families are interacting with those books. And I think that's something that we absolutely could use, and we should take advantage of that opportunity and the little ones and the teachers who are there.
Great, that's all my questions, thank you.
Board member Gomez, it's?
Yeah, I just had a question for us as a board. So I'm interested in what my board colleagues think of this. We, when we set our consent agenda, we sort of have this minimum level by which it shows up on our consent agenda. Do you, is there ever like a top-level threshold by which we would say, if it goes over this amount, we would want this to be either included in the other business for more information and more discussion, or to see it somewhere else?
Over 35,000.
Well, yeah, that's the minimum threshold, it has to be over 35. But if we're doing a But if we're doing a significant investment, say, three hundred thousand dollars in a curriculum, is, is there a, would we want to see it, um, in instruction work groups or have a, a bigger discussion about it?
I don't, I don't think I understood your question. Do you want to try again, or should I try to paraphrase what you're saying, or what I understood?
I guess I'm just asking, um, I think there used to be a, a curriculum list somewhere that we would get a summary of all the curriculum purchases, um, to, just to be able to show everything that was being purchased through curriculum and instruction. Um, is that something that went away for a specific reason? Or is that something that would be helpful for us to discuss again as a board, as a, as a tool to better understand, um, where the purchases are, are going? And Kelly, look, she got her name up on that.
I'm sorry. I see Kelly Rinkle has a comment. I mean, I'm sorry, Sabine, do you also have a comment?
Yes, I see one.
Uh, Sabine, if you want to speak, and then Kelly?
Yeah, I was going to say, um, you know, I, uh, like, for example, I see like the Jefferson basketball court costs a hundred sixty grand. You know, I'm not sure if that is necessarily relevant to be on an operations work group agenda. But I, I think it's fair to ask if something comes through to ask for a more in-depth update in the weekly update or to ask for a more, uh, in-depth, uh, analysis at a future meeting on a case-by-case basis. But in terms of like a universal thing, um, I think we, we, we just have to discern what we want more information on.
I want to say that I'm not necessarily sure that we're, we're within what we've given notice for right now in part because we're discussing kind of our process around procurement, um, which applies to kind of every item on the consent agenda and not necessarily this item specifically. Although I appreciate the, the conversations.
That's a good point. So maybe we push that to a, a future policy discussion.
I, I think so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Kelly?
Uh, that was going to be my point, Elie, which is we're discussing the procurement policy right, right now, um, which the board just recently approved and made amendments of which you're discussing. So I would recommend a future policy discussion versus here.
I think we're, I think we're in alignment. Uh, any further discussion around this item? I move that the Board of Education approve the Read for a Better World Summer Reading Take Home Book Packet to ensure students have access to culturally relevant texts. On one of our anti-racist, well, levered with funding from the twenty-twenty-one Curriculum and Instruction Operating Budget. Second? Second, Nikki Vandermeil. Uh, Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Vote carries seven zero.
So, um, ten point nine is our vote on consulting through ANET. Um, I pull this out every year. There was a high-quality, um, matched pair evaluation study done by Harvard University where they found that ANET had no impact on student achievement. And for that reason, I consistently don't support this. Uh, I also think that we have a coach in every one of our schools and we should really be working with our local coaches. And I know ANET is doing that. It is working hard to try to, um, increase our own capacity to do this work. And I'm, I'm, you know, I know this is our last year with ANET and we are going to be spinning off those responsibilities to our own coaches and I'm glad to see that happening. Um, I also, um, know that we'll be voting on the continued use of ANET assessments as a second vote later on. And, um, just in the context of ANET, it would be helpful to know, um, more about those assessments. And so I will, um, you know, in the interest of staying on agenda, I won't go into all my detailed questions about that. But, um, ANET assessment is a part of the, the contract and the consulting with them. And I do, would like to get more information about the assessments, um, in addition to this vote tonight.
Thank you so much, Board Member Karuski. If you want to speak to that?
Sure. Thanks, Ali. Um, Chris, absolutely. We are happy to share more information about those ANET formatives and how sort of the need for those came about. And then I just wanted to remind, um, um, folks that the study that you referenced, Chris, um, that you're exactly right. ANET found that they had, um, minimal or no impact in some schools. But what they found in their study was the schools where they had minimal impact or no impact were the schools who did not demonstrate a readiness for it and who saw it as something extra and something above and beyond what they did as a school. When you disaggregated the schools out from that research study, it was the schools who really wanted in, who embraced it as a strategy that saw, um, saw some gains. So that's why when we have ANET, it is not ANET for all schools. It was for the subset of schools that was really ready and their teams were ready and their school-based leadership teams were ready. Um, and that, that's why we're not, it's not a top-down mandate at all. It's for the schools, um, who really wanted to embrace that. And Chris, the other piece I want to share with you in the future is, um, the gains that we're seeing in some of our ANET schools right now so that we can all, um, have a conversation about how that looks and how the tools are benefiting those schools.
Board Member Karuski, do you have any follow-up? Thank you, Lisa. Any further discussion? I move that the Board of Education approve an expenditure in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand to the Achievement Network, ANET, for the third and final year of the partnership and support the areas of district-level leadership, school-based leadership, and teacher-team development for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year from the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Teaching and Learning Development Operating Budget. Second? Julia, your advisory vote?
Um, I'll abstain from this one.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five two.
Thank you. Ten point ten?
Um, ten point ten is Madison Out-of-School Time Data Sharing. And I just had a question about that. Um, this allows us to share, um, data about our students with partners in the Madison Out-of-School Time Partnership. And I'm wondering how those partners are keeping student data secure?
Good evening, everyone. Chris, I can take that. Hi, everyone. Bree McPhee-Lion, and I have a colleague on the line too, Nathan Beck, who is a joint MMSD City of Madison colleague. So we have a, uh, MIS, which we call the Most Information System Database that houses this information. It pulls directly from Infinite Campus and we hold the data in that system. And so any providers, any partners, any, um, organizations who are part of that agreement sign a host of the DSA. So the ones that, for instance, you saw on this. But we house all the information and they pull reports or we generate reports for them in that system. So it isn't, um, just shared out widely. It is very much, uh, linked to the provider supporting those students enrolled in their programs. That's all they see and we have, uh, the system that we manage internally. We even have a staff member, um, who is an information specialist that oversees that, uh, system, ensuring that we have the appropriate signatures, appropriate protections in place. And she is the one who is cleaning the data, making sure that anything that goes out is mostly in the aggregate depending on the data field. Um, I'm going to pause though and make sure that I didn't miss anything, especially for my experts in the line too. Uh, Nathan, if you have anything else to add to that?
Um, no, I think you did a great job. I would just add a few things. Um, we've been operating, uh, for three years and have had no instance, um, as of yet. Um, every user, um, signs a FERPA compliance agreement, um, that really outlines, um, every part of what FERPA is so that people that are using it, um, actually understand it. Um, we do a yearly audit of every single user, um, which is, um, kind of doesn't happen very often with other systems. So that, so every year we, we, we look at every single person who signed the FERPA, um, agreement. We make sure that they're still, um, working for the same organization. If, um, if they're not, we, um, eliminate all access, um, that they, they may have to the system. Um, and I also add, you know, this also, uh, came out of this idea that prior to this systematized way to access data, um, it was a little bit of a Wild West of whoever had political and social capital would negotiate to get, um, access to student data. So this actually, um, put a lot of systems and processes around how organizations could do that and consistency. Um, so that, that it wasn't just, um, the, the folks who had social capital making calls and then kind of getting data without systems to actually protect it.
That is really helpful. Thank you for the comprehensive answer. I appreciate it.
Yeah, that was incredibly important, informative. Thank you for asking a question, Chris. Uh, further discussion? Board Member Gomez Schmidt?
Um, thanks. Can you just point us to the direction of where to find the list of those twenty-five organizations? Or could you provide that for us that are included in the data sharing?
Chris, we can provide, we can provide an update with you with follow-up to with the list of organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? I move that the Board of Education approve the renewal and update data, update of the data sharing agreement between the Madison Metropolitan School District and out-of-school time providers participating in the Madison area out-of-school time initiative.
Uh-huh.
Second, Nikki Vandermeil. Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
You second?
Julia, your advisory vote was aye, I'm sorry? Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any, uh-huh. Thank you. Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you. Ten point three one.
So, um, I pulled this. I need to recede myself on this vote because I have a conflict of interest.
Any further discussion? I move that the Board of Education approve an award to the Summit Financial, to Summit Financial in the amount of eighty-three thousand seven hundred?
I think thirty, well, ten point three one, American Family.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I move that the Board of Education accept a donation in the amount of four hundred thousand, two hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, and two hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three from, um, from the American Family Mutual Insurance Company, S.I., to continue building MMSD staff skills, experience, and capacity in alignment with the strategic framework shift five, we embrace innovation.
Second?
Second, Board Member Morelli? Any further discussion?
Oh, it's Chris. Oh, it's me. It's Chris.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris. So second, Gomez Schmidt. And any further discussion? Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Vote passes six, six.
Ten point three three.
Thank you so much for the, um, whole draw. Um, I, I was hoping that someone in form of administration can speak a little bit to the partnership, uh, with the Dane County, uh, on this grant. Jake, and I see you, you have your camera on.
Yeah, Ananda, were you just looking for an overview?
Uh, yeah, just, yes, um, particularly because the education committee has been working on, um, supporting the partnership between, you know, school district and city and the county regards to COVID-related funds, federal funds. So I was hoping that you can talk a little bit about how this partnership is working and, uh, any opportunity for us, um, yeah, any highlights that you want to share from your experience?
Gotcha. So, uh, this, this is the money that Dane County had set aside specifically for mental health funds and supporting schools. And our mental health team put together this proposal requesting this amount of funding that Dane County was, um, generous enough to grant to us, allowing us to specifically target some expansion of, of additional mental health support. So, in particular, uh, they will be funding two, um, full-time mental health navigators. We're hoping at least one and perhaps both will be bilingual. Uh, and then an additional FTE, Mental Health Bilingual Resource Specialist, who can help with other translation, communication, messaging, uh, advertising, additional services, et cetera. In particular, uh, the mental health navigators will help strengthen referral pathways to services provided by, by school and community providers, uh, help build out and facilitate connection to our community mental health partners uh, and then also promote equity by removing additional barriers to needed resources. And in this particular case, specifically targeting families of color and especially, uh, Spanish-speaking families. And so in, in terms of, um, a partnership, it's in essence, you know, they had, they were giving away uh, or provided a grant opportunity for mental health supports and this is how we've requested it. And they agreed that this is the right resource for us at this time.
Thank you so much, Jake. I was, I made an assumption. I made an assumption, but I, I was, uh, I want to make sure that I'm correct in my assumption that this is COVID-related funding that the county has received.
Correct. That's my understanding as well.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you, Board Member Morelli. Any further discussion? I move that the Board of Education accept a grant in the amount of four hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-six from the Dane County Department of Human Services to support the well-being and mental health of approximately nine hundred and seventy-five MMSDs, four K through fifth grade students and their families across MMSDs, fifty schools, through personalized support, resource, referral, and care condition. Coordination, I'm sorry.
Second?
Second, Board Member Morelli? Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, aye? Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the end of our consent agenda.
I think thirteen point one.
Other reports to the Board, City of Madison Education Committee?
Yeah, I already kind of gave it away a little bit of what some of the things that we're working on. Um, but we have committed as a, as a, as a body of committee that's formed by the three, uh, institutions in, in, uh, Madison, uh, Madison School District and, uh, Dane County to look at, uh, the continuity of gap on, uh, particularly the inadequacies that COVID has, um, given us or has, uh, um, the way our communities have been impacted by the, the, the digital gaps um, in, in the, in the, um, you know, with our families and our students. So the city has created a committee, a digital technology committee. Well, they had already created this committee, but they created a task force on digital inclusion to particularly look at inadequacies and the gaps, uh, and how to address them. Um, we also reviewed, uh, the City of Madison COVID Relief and Violence Prevention RFP, the applications, uh, and then all the community agencies that received, there were awards that grant. We also got a chance to look at the amount of gaps, uh, on funding. About, I think, eleven, uh, one point one, uh, million of gap on, on agencies that have requested grants that are not going to be met. Um, and also, um, we passed a motion to support and encourage the collaboration of the coordination of COVID relief funding, federal funding across the cities, the school district, and the county. Um, and to, for our, for our representatives to encourage our institutions to work collaboratively to address. So I was really excited to see that that was already, that's already happening. We wanted to sort of elevate and underscore that the partnership is incredibly important, uh, to address the needs and that, uh, although the county is serving the entire, you know, a, a large number of, of cities, that, you know, we know that so many of our students are impacted in the greater Madison, uh, uh, school district. And so many of those relief are going to be supporting many students that are not necessarily in the boundaries of the city. So it's really exciting to see that we're already making this happen with the, with the mental health, which is one of the priorities of this group. Thank you so much. And now our, uh, next agenda item is to, uh, continue to get updates on the digital inclusion and, uh, continue a conversation around how we're going to support the, we also talked about the, the projects that are not being funded by the big, the big ideas from the school district and, and then, uh, the other projects or the other proposals that were moved through, uh, the city RFP. that were moved through the city RFP proposal. Thank you so much, President Muldroff.
Thank you. Board Member Chris?
Thank you, Ananda, for that update. I'm really, really glad to hear that the city and the school district and the county are talking about coordination of trying to invest our ESSER funds for the betterment of everybody. I'm really glad to hear about mental health. Glad to hear that technology is on the radar. I think this is an opportunity for us to look at digital equity as a long-term strategy and have some funds to maybe get that going. And I would also love to see transportation on that list. Safe routes to school for walking and busing is another way to keep kids safe on the way to school. So if there's a way for us to coordinate the investment of ESSER funds in safe routes to school to, to help our kids, you know, to reduce the burden and the number of kids on buses and also make sure that kids are safe if they're using outdoor means to get to school.
There?
Yes, absolutely.
So thank you so much, Chris. I, I didn't do justice to the resolution that we passed. Transportation actually was an item that we were already taking on before COVID. And then we now know that, you know, with reopening of the schools summer and the continuation of, of the work, that transportation is a bigger thing. So I wanted to share, we underscored a few priorities in our resolution. So youth employment, mental health, transportation, digital access and also families and young people experiencing all of this. So thank you so much, Chris, for that, for that reminder. So you all should see a memo coming pretty soon.
Board Member Van, do you really need your hand up?
And then she, and then Ananda nicely answered it. However, it did spark another idea just suddenly. Additionally, I was wondering on ESSER and on biking also, can we somehow include recumbent or disability-friendly bikes? Because currently, the one weakness of the bike, city bike program is there is no accessible vehicles for individuals who have either mobility issues who could use a recumbent bike. And like you can't get a recumbent e-bike. And if possible, some of our students may benefit from that and also the city may benefit from it. And I just was listening to a podcast and about an individual who's a student at UW-Whitewater. He said he loved Madison when he visited it, except he couldn't go biking on the, on the trails because he couldn't find an accessible bike in the city to do so. And it made me kind of think, well, maybe we could try and figure that out with the help of the committee.
Next. Thank you.
Student Senate report? Julia?
Yes, yeah. Last week, Student Senate held a candidate forum for upcoming election for the president as well as board representative, so his successor. So the board representative is going to be Gordon, or sorry, the Student Senate President is going to be Gordon Allen from East High School. And we have two candidates for our student representative position, Toby, or Toby Hiasley from Memorial and Nama Pandy from West High School. And we're going to be having an election to decide between them this upcoming week. And so students were able to hear from them and ask questions in the candidate forum last week. We found very successfully. And we're excited to see who's going to be representing students next year. We also held a discussion recently on earned honors. And we heard a diverse range of opinions on it, including optimism and some concerns with implementation. It was interesting to hear what students had to say about it. And we encourage the board and the district administration to keep in contact with students as those discussions move forward.
Thank you so much, Julia. I want to congratulate Gordon for his position as Student Senate President. I've gotten to serve alongside Gordon for the last couple of years. And he will be a fantastic leader for the Student Senate and for the young people who are, who are running. You know, we're, we're rooting for you both. Madison Schools Community Recreation, MSCR Advisory Committee?
Yes, we are focusing heavily into our new building, hopefully out of June or in July. There for all meetings until we're into the new building you've kind of put up. Until then, then we'll be here.
All right. Thank you very much, Nikki. All right. Other business, old and new. There is no other business, old and new. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Some enthusiasm right there.
That's what I heard.
Okay. Second, yeah, I'll second. Julia, your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven, oh. Have a lovely evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.